Ooh. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Hold on, he bout to start it off, baby. Hold up, hold up, give me a minute. Give me a minute. Give me a minute, boy. What's good, baby? I was dead. All this stuff. Oh, man. Alright, let's go. Yo, 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 yes, sir. Now, we bout to go to today's chart, see what setup we can catch. And which one we did. We gonna see which one we catching, which one we doing, let's get it. Alright, let's go, let's go, let's go. Alright, let me turn on the fan real quick. I gotta turn on the fan, this. You know, it's a little hot in here. It's a little hot in here, my boy. We gonna get the stream. Take it away from this. We just gonna be studying. Man, I just need like a notification if it probably change. Yeah, that's our feedback. But what's good, baby? So today, it's about one, we gonna see if we can catch any setups around time to beginning of it's almost the end of the day. So we just gonna run time back into the end of the day. We caught, we still some in the morning, this is what we looked at, a W, a W and an L. On the L, so two W's and a L. Off the big draw, so big draw. Come on, it's down turn. Would have never caught this, but it caught this one. And you can see it caught this one, boom, 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 boom. So it would've been three, that just writes some stats, so today's random catch setup. Setup. One minute. WL, boom, 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 boom. L. With a 1.2 loss. Y'all know what that 1.2 is, so first one is 3.6. 3 point, we got, you know, we gotta calculate, uh, 3.6 with our I. Second one is a loss, boom. We probably could play it back a little more. Third one is a 2.53. Alright, alright, let's go. It ain't the prettiest. But it gets the job done. It ain't the prettiest, but it gets the job done. It ain't the prettiest, but it get the job done, so as y'all can see, that's what happened. Now. Now you can see, probably thought it jumped up. Never did. To be honest, this is still kind of valid. But I probably wouldn't have took this one, but do y'all wanna take it? Unless y'all wanna do everything random, we can. But this is a 101. This would be kind of hard as a 101. Damn. I would've lost here. We lost that one. We just going off everything we see, and then we gonna learn how to simplify everything we see, we not just gonna take it blindly, we gonna see why random ones is taken with the strategy, and then we break it up. Boom, oh, up again. Want to take it again? Can? That's another L. We are just testing random numbers. L. Probably put this to stop loss again. So that's three and three. Price is going up. Boom, 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 never kinda hit, never kinda hit, never kinda hit. Alright. This is kinda nasty, we see a draw, try to get a blue candle. We see a blue, don't see one blue, one two, too small, one two. Too small, goes up, goes up. Never hits, goes back up, goes back up. Comes up, down, this is kinda our first opportunity to get another, anyone, right here. It's our real, it's like really our first opportunity. We ain't gonna count the other ones, it's probably our first opportunity around 1:14 PM. We just learning to take anything that look good, we lose. Our TP is somewhere around here. Stop loss, that's a nice one. Then boom, we lose that one, come back, you still see it's holding strong, you lose that one again. Is that even realistic? Let me see. That might be realistic. Let's get that in order. Let's get that in order, I'm telling y'all, man, this is about to be crazy. The shit about it, and that misses boss. Alright. Now. We have a we have another one. Probably we ain't catch that one, but that's a W. Let me see, this might be too small to even answer. Alright, it's barely a point, yeah, you probably can answer that. Not posting that. We got this show right here. Boom, 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 that's a L. We just testing everything right now. Just testing. Boom, 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 never came back up, boom, 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 does come back up, do you answer, probably not, after seeing this small candy, probably wouldn't answer. But the, nah, I really, I'm trying to test it all, but that's nasty work, that's nasty. Boom, boom, boom. Might wanna see price, still wants to continue up. Never been a L. Goes low, you be entered here. And this right here, you will want at least right here. At least a one to five. Mm-hmm, it pushes back up. So, oh. I could say one or 150. 1.5, so we could do that. We can do that. Alright, let's go. We gonna try to finish out this whole day. And see what we get, just randomly. Boom, boom, boom. It's probably not enough. Boom, 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 push up, it come back down. This is nice. I like how this one looks. Does put this as line of interest. Let's see. Very important, line of interest. Let's see types. Very important. Line of I know, take profit. So, as you can see, if we enter here, this is the line of interest, but the line of entry does hit too. But I don't guess we not wanna do that. I'mma just get out of one, I'mma get out of one, I ain't gonna get a no point extra. I'm not gonna get at no point extra. As you can see. Get the gold box. This right here is powerful. So, this is what we do. The line of interest, see, we still look for entry points, this is an entry point right here, if you want. Cause it do look like it's holding off support, so we can go something like this. So we could do 1.9. Okay, got one more here. That's a L. This one is a L. That's a L, that's a L. She was in this chat. No one's in here, no. So boom, 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 we enter here. A loss. Boom, boom, boom. Writing notes as you go back, so when you go back and study this again, you have to go back and study this again to actually understand why you're right and wrong, all you gotta do in trading is study the, don't study if you're right or wrong, and see if it's good, that's it. Just study the end of the data. A randomness, try to tweak it to your best ability, I test like every time you use the strategy, go back and look at it again, see which one you really wouldn't take, and which one you really would, go back at it again, see which one is best, when is it best in the market, how is it gonna do in this market, how's it gonna do in that market, go back and do it again, find the best setups, like randomly now, you know, what's the best market, you know, when to do it, the best time to do it, the timeframe, you went back three times, go back, do it over, same, same chart too, and see which one you get, and then go back and do a different chart, that's the best thing I could tell you. So sometimes we go back and look at a chart at least three, four times, and then go that, and go to a random chart, go about two, three random days charts, see the market, you study the analogy, test it, and then you can put it in demo, test it again, and then you go to live account, that's what I do, y'all, y'all, y'all. So, mm-hmm, small, boom, 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 boom. It kinda hits TP, but I don't like that TP, don't like this one, I like this one. It hits. But I don't think we know when it hits. The most we could say is right here. But I wouldn't even take that, I probably wouldn't take this. But I won't even take that. I probably wouldn't take this. Alright. Enter there. Now. We know this actually does work. We could say a two oh nine one. Alright. Alright, now we're gonna add this up. This is for today's catch up. So this is today's time. Four fourteen. Twenty-five. So we did seven through seven AM through twelve. Uh, what is AM? So. Testing. Force size fourteen. Testing. Set up. Plan. Randomly test every area. Randomly test every area you can put. Fifty percent zone fit. Randomly says area you can put this. And enter. That's done. Take the best setups only. Take the best. Follow. Four fifteen. Four fifteen. Uh, twenty twenty-five. And. And. Rewind. Time. P A. Plus. Sixty percent. Win rate. Wrong rate. Or. Alright, I could do that tomorrow. So this I'll do tomorrow. I probably do this one off camera and then rewind this and finish this off with the rest of the strategies I've been writing. I just wanted to do today. Uh, I probably do this one off camera and tell you how my stats go. I'm gonna finish calculating these stats for today. I'm gonna go back, do the best strategy off camera and then do the three times rate or a sixty-five percent win rate or like a um profit rate actually like, so I gained. I lost a hundred, but I gained three hundred no matter the win or loss. Either, either one works. And then we already grade on it for this one. And then this would just give us a clue analyst or just a a chart. We are still taking calculations of the same thing over here. And after that, we should be golden. And then after that, I probably test it a little more. I probably finish, if I stay on float with this, study this at least an hour a day. Probably two hours a day. I studied different parts of the market, look at the strategy, open up a demo, test it in real time demo, uh. Still tested in different strategy. I should be done by the end of the week and go on to a new strategy or test it. For a prop firm strategy and it will be done. And what we done? So right now. Let's add this up. Let's add this all. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Thirteen. So thirteen. One point two. So the. What's it saying? We're gonna just say a hundred and fifty-six. Hundred fifty-six. Now we add the rest. I don't, we don't have to. Alright, now, let's go to uh this one now. I think we just gotta. I gotta take away this one first. One, two, two, three, four, five. So that's five. That is five. Six. That's six. That's six. Is it anymore? No, that's six. Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. So we went thirteen, thirteen, fifteen percent win rate. This is a fifteen, fifty, fifteen percent win rate, but we got a little advantages or holding for a little bit. So, that's what we do. We had the same thirteen, thirteen win rate for thirteen. And basically we have to have better than one on ones. Basically that's what the market is telling me. But we gotta know when to catch them one-on-one, so. A, a, a note to remem- remind myself. Let me write this in here. Impulse wave. Now, impulse wave. When. Enter. Eager. RR's. Vigo RR's. Follow train. Uh, follow train. Alright, let's see. So basically, we add this up. Three. Six oh six point oh one. Two point oh one. Plus one point five two. Plus one point nine eight. Plus. Two point oh nine, plus one point seven five. Plus six. So, here we get. Alright, this one. So we would get. Two, five. Five. Two, five. Twenty-five point. Two. Damn. Twenty-five, twenty-five, two. One, one, two, plus thirteen. So five dollar. I don't like that, to be honest, I don't like this. Not one bit. So basically, that's not even double our profit, we at least need double. So, what we want. So, what can we write from this? Want better. Win rate, at least a, I'd say seventy plus. Sixty-five, I could say sixty-five. Let's just say, a plus sixty-five. Rate. And. And gain. Rate. Of. Two fifty percent. Or, we could just say two hundred percent. Cause we not wanna be too greedy, two hundred percent, we have to at least improve, so, what we did was a thirteen, thirteen. And loss equals. Equals thirteen slash thirteen. Percentage. I forgot how to do that. I forgot how to do it, I think you add. Yes, plus. One, five, six, zero. A hundred, five, one, two. I forgot how to do it. Let me see, let's act chat GPT, that's why we got it. How to get the percentage of two numbers? Okay. Oh, okay, let's see, two thousand five two. Thanks chat D V T divided by one, five, six, zero. Times a hundred. So, that's a win rate. On a hundred and sixty-three percent. So, that's what we got for today. So we tested randomly, this was random, if you use this strategy randomly. We went thirteen and thirteen off the one minute timeframe, we gained a hundred and sixty-three percent on the account. So basically, we won two thousand, let's fix this a little bit. Hold on, hold on. So basically. Okay, let's. Okay, basically today cat, today random cash setup, one minute for fourteen, twenty, twenty-five, seven through twelve AM. Stats WL thirteen and thirteen, game percentage, a hundred and sixty-three percent. We have gained two thousand five hundred and twenty, two thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars gaining the same. Betting the same amount of price percentage on every trade. If, but if our R to R go up, we win more, we lose the same, every trade, every trade, every trade, every trade. Now, one to two, we'll lose one to two, we're not gonna say one because there's leverage, there's spread. So, I put one point two, maybe it's not that high, maybe it is high, we never know. Does depend, so, we doing a calculation of one point two, you have to be generous. Especially on the loser's side, be more generous towards losers than winners, I tell people that. Because it's more realistic, like even if you more generous of losers and it's good of losing percentage while testing. And imagine how good it is gonna be winners, probably be like two percent better. Now. The win rate was fifty percent. We want this don't to be a win rate of sixty-five percent and a gain rate of two hundred to make it feel comfortable. So. First that we randomly test every area, you can put the fi- fifty percent bid and enter, that's done. Take the best setup only and follow the rules. The way bigger RR's follow the trend, we not gonna do nothing, we gonna see how to execute. Then, we're gonna rewind the time and then take the best setup, it must be a better than the sixty-five percent win rate, if it's not. We gonna probably test another area of interest and if it's not, we might drop it. But I will go over this on my own time and then, for the rest, I'll be testing out the three day, I've been. Around in the three days, testing out random points, this was just random for today, and I'm just testing out a random point, I will be making a video on this. So this is all the random points I wrote, I'll be making a video on this. Uh, how to even execute better points of interest. As you can see, look, three days. Three days, win, 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 win. Ten, one, seventeen point one, as you can see, that's the, the better thing, one point two, win, one, 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 four through nine. Not as much, uh, not as much as that. But yeah. We got a lot of notes, and we gonna, most likely, I might just do this as a video. And bust this down with y'all tomorrow, I'm not too sure, I'mma bust, I might bust down both, but I'm glad we was here, I'm glad we was here, I'm glad we was here. And tune in tomorrow, peace, peace.